Done. Is it okay to pick up from here?
Yes, it is. I apologize.
No, no worries at all. So we were just talking about the makeup of the Ethics Commission, and I was saying that for the first time in at least a year, we now have a full complement of nine commissioners on the commission. We were down to seven, and then actually another had to be replaced. So we have three new members, and it's a great group of folks. We have different sorts of people on the Ethics Commission. We have a couple of attorneys. We have a college professor, a Catholic nun, a physician, a real estate professional. So it's a good group. So look at how powerful the Ethics Commission is. They have advisory, investigative, adjudicative, and even removal powers. Now, I'm told that they haven't exercised removal powers because, quite frankly, if someone's jammed up enough with the Ethics Commission that they risk being removed, they've usually stepped down first. So while serving on the Ethics Commission, its members are prohibited from holding or campaigning for public office. They may not hold office in any political party or in any political committee, nor may they participate in or contribute to any political campaign, not so much as a sign on the front lawn of an Ethics Commissioner during election time. So then, okay, so what's happened is, is because I was on for so long on the same screen, I got stuck. And I think because I did something as a host, I got stuck. So let me try and get unstuck. There we go. Thanks for your patience. So I'm on the Ethics Commission's staff, and our executive director and chief prosecutor is a gentleman named Jason Grammet. Some of you might know Jason because prior to his being elevated to the position of executive director in April of 2018, Jason held my job for close to 20 years. He was a staff attorney and the education coordinator. So Jason and I are two of the five staff attorneys on staff at the Ethics Commission. We have three investigators. They are all former police officers and/or detectives. They know their way around an investigation. We have a financial disclosure officer. Her name is Michelle Berg. You might want to remember that, although you can access that information at another time. She helps with all the financial disclosure issues. And with our ancillary staff, there are 12 of us at the Ethics Commission, and more on our contact information in a little bit. We're in Providence on Fountain Street. So who is subject to the Code of Ethics? I will tell you, all elected and appointed officials and employees of state and local government, of boards, commissions, and agencies are all subject to the Code of Ethics. So conflict of interest. Conflicts of interest and nepotism are pretty much the bread and butter of Rhode Island's Ethics Commission. We deal with a whole lot of other things, and we'll touch on those other things tonight. But I like to start with conflicts of interest since it's really the major, major crux of what we do and of when people run into trouble with the Ethics Commission. So on to conflicts of interest. A person subject to the Code of Ethics, that's you, that's me, may not participate in any matter in which he or she has an interest, financial or otherwise, which is in substantial conflict with the proper discharge of his or her duties in the public interest. So to understand this, you really need to know what a substantial conflict of interest is. That occurs if it is reasonably foreseeable. I'll tell you what that means in the next slide, that he or she, any family member, any business associate, or any business by which he or she is employed or represents, will derive a direct monetary gain or even suffer a direct monetary loss by reason of his or her official activity. So let me tell you that the Code of Ethics does not discriminate between financial gain and financial loss. The concern is financial impact. So someone might say, you know, Lynn, it may, I may have a conflict of interest because this vote could affect me personally, but truth be told, I'm going to take a hit if it passes financially. So I'll take one for the team. I'll vote anyway, vote my conscience, and there's no conflict. Please don't, okay? Because again, whether you're going to be impacted positively or negatively, financial impact is financial impact. Okay, so what is reasonably foreseeable mean? That means that the conflict need not be certain to occur, but the probability has to be greater than conceivable. That's reasonably foreseeable. Kind of a lot of airspace if you think about it, okay? Not certain, but more than conceivable. So the Code of Ethics talks about your business associates in more than one regulation or statute. So I'd like you to have a familiarity of who your business associates are. They are persons or entities with whom you are joined to achieve a common financial objective. Let's look at some examples. Your business partners are your business associates. That's relatively straight on. Those are the easy ones. People you have hired are your business associates, your attorney, your accountant, your Realtor, your contractor, you get the idea. The Ethics Commission has determined that the landlord-tenant relationship is one of a business association. Also, and this one's important, any businesses or organizations, even not-for-profit, if you are an officer or serve on the Board of Directors, and that's regardless of whether or not you were paid for your services. So business associates don't remain so forever in many instances. So I'd like to let you know what the Ethics Commission looks at if they are trying to determine the existence of an ongoing business association. They are going to ask, are the parties conducting ongoing business transactions? Do the parties have outstanding accounts? Does one owe the other money? Is there an anticipated future relationship between the parties? Now, you don't need all three of these. Any one of these present will trigger a business association for purposes of the Code of Ethics. So a couple of minutes ago, I said your Realtor is your business associate, right? So if you sold your home in 2015, and you used a Realtor, and you've since, you know, you got an offer, you had the closing, all the funds have been distributed, you've been living happily ever after in your new home for the past six years with no intent to sell or buy or use this or any Realtor, and that person comes before you in your public capacity, barring any other type of relationship, probably not your business associate, okay? But if your house is for sale now, and you're entertaining offers, or you've accepted an offer, but the closing hasn't happened yet, and your Realtor comes before you in your public capacity, then that's a conflict of interest because that's an ongoing business association, okay? The Code of Ethics talks about family members as well. So I'd like you to be familiar with who are your family members under the code, whether by blood, marriage, or adoption. There's your list. Spouse, parents, children, siblings, grandparents, grandchildren, your aunts and your uncles, your nieces and your nephews, and even your first cousins. So these are all your family members under the code by blood, marriage, or adoption. And the question always asked, is my ex-spouse my family member? No, because you're not related by blood, marriage, or adoption. So somebody might say to me, Lynn, I haven't spoken with my sister in three years. If she has a matter before me in my public capacity, I wouldn't go out of my way to hurt her any more than I would to help her, okay? It's not a conflict. If she has a matter before me, I'll treat her like I would anybody else. Now, as unfortunate the story is that status of that relationship is, the estrangement is, the rules are the rules, and a family member is a family member regardless of the status of your relationship at any given time, okay? Same person might say, oh, I'm a lot closer to my best friend than my sister. What about friendships? Just the Code of Ethics monitor my friendships? Tell you what, it doesn't. You know why? It really can't. I mean, whatever would the Ethics Commission say? Well, did you meet in kindergarten? Did you date in high school? Do you take each other's kids back and forth to team events and practices? Do you talk on the phone once a day, once a month? Do you get together for holidays? You can't monitor friendships. Remember at the beginning, I talked about that constitutionally founded goal of avoiding the appearance of impropriety? Recusing when one of your friends comes before you is a great opportunity to exercise that option, okay, to avoid the appearance of impropriety. All righty. Conflicts of interest. So think of it this way. A conflict of interest is a situation where a person's public duties and private life intersect, right? And I know at the beginning of this training, I said, you don't have to memorize a thing. There's no test at the end, and that's still true. But if you leave here tonight keeping anything in the front of your mind, please make it this. It's not unethical to have a conflict of interest. It does not violate the Code of Ethics to have a conflict of interest, said the woman from West Warwick with 31 first cousins, okay? It's not the conflict, that's the problem. The potential problem is the failure to identify and manage your conflict. And we at the Ethics Commission help people do that every single day, okay? So do I have a conflict of interest? Here's what you're going to ask yourself. Is it reasonably foreseeable, more than conceivable, less than certain? Is it reasonably foreseeable that a decision that I'm helping to make as part of my public duties will result in a financial benefit or detriment to me, my family or household member? How about my private employer? How about my business associate? Ask yourself, even if there's no financial impact, is a family member, household member, employer, or business associate a party to or participating in the matter being discussed? If the answer is yes, then you have a conflict of interest, and you must recuse from any participation in the matter. Now, you might notice in the past two slides, the term household member was thrown in there with family member. For purposes of the Code of Ethics, specifically the nepotism provisions, which we will address in a short, in a short while, if someone lives in your household, that is conflict of interest territory regardless of whether or not you are related to that person by blood, marriage, or adoption, okay? How to recuse? Actual recusal is relatively easy. We ask that you complete what's called a statement of conflict of interest form, sometimes called a recusal form. Those should be available in your town hall. If not, you go right to our website. I'll give you the address toward the end of this presentation, and you can get one there as well. We ask that you fill it out when you're recusing, present the original to your presiding officer, your appointing authority director, your immediate supervisor, and do send us a copy. So we have a record that you recused when you were supposed to. Okay, on to nepotism. We'll fly through this. You may not participate in any matter as part of your public duties if there is reason to believe or expect that any person within your family or a household member is a party to or a participant, or will derive a direct monetary gain, or suffer a direct monetary loss, or obtain some sort of employment advantage, okay? Now, these prohibitions apply regardless. Your family or household member could absolutely objectively be the most qualified candidate for the job, absolutely deserve that promotion. The point is, if it's going to happen, it's going to happen without your participation. The policy underlying the prohibitions against nepotism recognizes it's just really hard for anybody to be truly objective when considering matters that impact their family or household members. And again, don't forget that constitutionally founded goal of avoiding the appearance of impropriety. Do we think you can do it? Do we think you could behave just as fairly if someone in your family were before you or your business associate as you would anyone else? Totally not the point. The Code of Ethics removes from you the obligation to defend your actions if they involve a family member or business associate, et cetera, okay? A couple of examples of nepotism. This is not an exhaustive list, but this should get you thinking. If any of these things are about to occur, you're in nepotism territory. The hiring of a family or household member, the awarding of a contract to a family or household member, any decision regarding a family or household member's property, appointment of a family or household member to a financially remunerated position, participation in a disciplinary matter in which a family or household member's employment is at risk. Just some examples of nepotism right there. So here's a scenario. I just want you to think about this in your own head. Andy's a member of the town council. The town has just released a request for proposals, an RFP, for the construction of a new municipal playground. Okay, Billy is Andy's nephew. Billy's got a construction company that submits a bid in response to the RFP. Now, I'm going to ask you three questions, just to think about in your own head. One, does Billy need to withdraw his bid for this construction of a new municipal playground because his uncle Andy is on the town council? Two, can Uncle Andy participate in the decision of what proposal to accept and who to hire for this job, provided that he tell everybody upfront, full transparency, Billy's my nephew? Three, does Andy, as a member of the town council, need to recuse completely from any and all aspects of this bid selection process because he's got a nephew that he anticipates is going to submit a bid? And I'll tell you, if you said number three, you'd be absolutely right. Andy must recuse from all aspects of the bid selection process. Okay, a little more about that. Billy has a construction company. He's not even subject to the Code of Ethics in this example. Why should he have to withdraw his bid? It's not Billy's conflict, it's Uncle Andy's, okay? That second option I gave you was there to make you think a little bit because it's got a nice ring to it. Full disclosure, as long as Andy tells everybody upfront that Billy's his nephew, he can participate. Not good enough, my friends, okay? Andy has to recuse from all aspects of the bid selection process. All righty, so moving on, advocacy and supervision. These fall under the nepotism provisions as well. You may not participate in the supervision, evaluation, appointment, classification, promotion, transfer, or discipline of anybody in your family or your household. Also, you may not delegate to your subordinate any of those same tasks. You know why? If you can't do it, you can't tell the person who works for you to do it. It's the same thing. It's as though you've done it yourself, okay? The Code of Ethics does allow the Ethics Commission to approve what's called an alternate chain of command. Sometimes that happens with certain legacy jobs. You might get people in the same family that join the same town police department or fire department, all right? Couple of quick things about alternate chains of command. The person who's going to step in for the person that has the conflict of interest has to be of equal rank or higher than the person that's got the conflict. Also, this alternate chain of command may not be presumed acceptable prior to the issuance of a duly authorized advisory opinion from the Rhode Island Ethics Commission, and you will leave here tonight knowing what one of those is, when you might need one, and how to get one, okay? Recusal. I get this question a lot. If I recuse, do I need to leave the room? Well, let's talk about open session first, or a public session. Recusal does not mean that the public official must leave the room if it's an open meeting. But I'll tell you right now, that's best practice, and that's what we advise people to do. No good will come from staying in the room if you've recused, okay? Why, why risk you leaving? Someone might say, can I sit at the table with my hands folded and my mouth closed? No. Your appearance at the table, right, is going to give the appearance of participation. The very least, leave the table. You want to do yourself a favor, leave the room, okay? Because what if you recuse, you leave the table, you go sit in the audience, and you happen to be texting somebody at home that, you know, need anything from the store on my way home, and at the same time, somebody at the table gets a text from somebody else and checks it, and then somebody in the, in the audience says, hey, that person recused, but they're texting the other guy at the table. It's not even true, but I've just given you an example of why it's best to leave the room. You don't have to. The code doesn't force it. But you want to do yourself a favor, you recuse, get out of the room. Now, that's open session. If you're an executive session, closed session, a completely different story. Once an official has recused from executive session, no more right to be in that room than any other member of the public. You gotta get out, all right? C is for contracts. We're going to breeze through these. No person subject to the Code of Ethics may enter into any contract with a state or municipal agency unless the contract has been awarded through an open and public process, including prior public notice and subsequent public disclosure of all the proposals considered and the contracts awarded. Now, there are certain contracts for professional services which are customarily awarded without competitive bidding. Those are not subject to competitive bidding, but they still need to be awarded through a process of public notice and disclosure of the financial details. And you can see on your screen a couple of examples of these contracts for professional services with physicians, or attorneys, or engineers, architects, accountants, land surveyors, psychologists. Those are just some examples. Secondary employment, sometimes called moonlighting. A lot of people subject to the Code of Ethics want to have a second job, okay? You may, generally speaking, you may have a private or public sector job in addition to your state or municipal position. However, you may not accept outside employment that is going to do either or both of the following. It may not impair your independence of judgment as to your public duties, okay? That's one. It may not induce or require you to disclose confidential government information that you've acquired by way of your official duties and because of your official duties. Additionally, I want you to be aware of the factors that the Ethics Commission looks at when someone seeks an advisory opinion, asking if they can accept secondary employment. The Commission is going to look at the nexus between your public duties and your private employment to see how closely they interact. The work must be completed outside your normal work hours and without the use of public resources. A public official or employee may not appear before his or her own agency with respect to their new job. The work must be conducted outside of areas over which the official or employee has decision-making jurisdiction. And a public official or employee may not use his or her public position to solicit business or customers for their private job. So just by way of a quick example, take someone who works for the Department of Children, Youth, and Families. Let's say a social worker for DCYF does a wonderful job. She looks out for children, and nights and weekends, she wants to make a little extra money, and she loves dogs, so she's going to start a little business. She's going to walk dogs. She's going to board them for people that are going away for the weekend, right? What she's not going to do is put her DCYF phone number and email on her business card for her dog walking business, right? She's not going to create flyers on the copy machine at 101 Friendship Street, the DCYF office, and then hang them in the elevators, right? And she's not going to be checking on the welfare of a child at a foster home on a Friday, and as she's leaving, you know, notice the cutest dog she's ever seen on the couch and say to the foster mom, hey, tell you what, if you ever need him walked or boarded, that's my side business. You can give me a call. Here's my business card. So that's what not to do, okay, for secondary employment. This shall come as no surprise to any of you, I'm sure. You may not use or disclose for financial gain confidential information acquired in the course of your official duties. Gifts. This is a popular section of the Code of Ethics. If you participate in making decisions, and I know you do, you may not accept cash or forgiveness of debt from interested persons. I'll tell you who they are in the next slide. You may accept things of value up to and including $25 per instance and $75 per year per interested person, okay? So let's look at who interested persons are. That would be a person, a business, or a representative that has a direct financial interest in a decision that you either make or you help to make as part of your public duties, okay? Now, you might say, yeah, 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 we get it, Ethics Commission. We can't go around accepting gifts from interested persons. What will people think? It's going to look like they're expecting something in return. But $25, that will go, won't get you a sandwich and a cup of coffee these days. We'll have a gift provision in our town, but the limit's $100, not 25. No can do, okay? Here's what you can do. You can say, we get it, Ethics Commission, $25, but that's, that's a lot of having to weigh what's the value of the gift. Here in our town, we're just going to have a zero tolerance policy on gifts. None, no value. We just don't take them from interested persons. You can do that, and good on you for doing that. You can even make a plan that is more strict than the code. We're going to make it a $10 limit. You can do that. What you can't do, you've got to, you've got to follow the more strict one of either your town or the, or the Code of Ethics, okay? I think that's it on gifts for now. We can take questions later if you have them. Transactions with subordinates. You may not engage in a financial transaction, by that I mean private employment or consulting, giving or receiving loans, or monetary, political, or charitable contributions with an employee, contractor, or consultant over whom you exercise supervisory responsibilities, okay? There are some exceptions. There are certain financial transactions in the normal course of a regular commercial business or occupation, or if the subordinate initiates the financial transaction, or for charitable events if they are sponsored by the highest official or governing body of the state or municipality, okay? Now, no person shall solicit or request directly or through a surrogate political contributions from a subordinate for whom in that official or employee's official duties and responsibilities, he or she exercises supervision over those folks, okay? Now, this does not prohibit or limit the First Amendment right of a subordinate to make a political contribution. So all that mumbo jumbo in English, if you, you cannot ask someone who you supervise to make a contribution to your political campaign, but the code can't stop someone who works for you from doing so on his or her own without having been asked, all righty? Revolving door. There are several revolving door provisions in the Code of Ethics. They are all in there to prevent public officials and employees from kind of cashing in on relationships made and, and knowledge gained during their period of public service. We require a cooling off period generally of one year for revolving doors. So I've included a couple of revolving door provisions so you get the idea. No elected or appointed official may accept any appointment or election that requires approval by the board over which he or she is or was a member to any position that carries with it financial benefit, okay? And that prohibition continues for one year after termination of his or her membership in or on such a body. Let's look at another revolving door provision. This one pertains to the General Assembly. No member of the General Assembly shall seek or accept state employment not held at the time of the member's election while serving in the General Assembly and for a period of, you guessed it, one year after leaving legislative office. Here's another municipal official revolving door provision. No municipal elected official or school committee member, whether elected or appointed, because they're chosen different ways in different towns, while holding office and for a period of one year after leaving municipal office, shall seek or accept employment with any municipal agency in the municipality in which that official serves, okay? There's an exception for employment that was held at the time of the official's election or appointment and maintained throughout the duration. This is a lot of stuff. Please don't worry if you're not getting it the first time. I've been with the Ethics Commission for two and a half years, and I learn something new every day, all right? I just want you to be familiar. That's, that's good enough for now. You may not represent yourself or anyone else before the agency that you are a member of or employed by, or any other agency for which your agency has the appointing authority, right? You may not serve as an expert witness before your own agency. And these prohibitions continue for one year after you leave your public office or employment. What do I mean by represent yourself? That would be participating in the presentation of evidence or arguments before your agency for purposes of trying to influence the judgment of that agency in your favor, okay? There is an exception. The Ethics Commission may grant what's called a hardship exception, allowing you to represent yourself before your own agency. To get one of these hardship exceptions, you must request an advisory opinion. Let me give you the, the prime example of a hardship exception. This happens a few times a year. Someone's on the zoning board for their city or town, and he or she wants to build a shed in the backyard of their residence, right? There's a little problem with the setback requirement. So let's say it's a he. He needs a zoning variance. Where do you get your zoning variance? From the zoning board. Ah, I'm on the zoning board. I can't appear before the zoning board. I want my shed. You seek an advisory opinion from the Ethics Commission. Chances are that the Ethics Commission is going to say, you may have a hardship exception, allowing you to go before the zoning board to ask for the variance so you can put a shed on your own personal property. But you're going to recuse from consideration of the matter. You're not going to participate, and you're going to tell everybody else that you got this advisory opinion, and you're acting in accordance there with, okay? Here's who's not going to get a hardship exception. You're on the zoning board, and you have an opportunity to buy a new piece of land, and you do so, and you and you do so, and you and your buddy are gonna go into business together. You're gonna, you're gonna, you know, develop it commercially, rent it out, make a ton of dough. But you're on the zoning board, and you need to go before the zoning board. Think twice about seeking a hardship exception, that's not a hardship, that's a new commercial enterprise. That's one where you're gonna have to wait till you're off the, the board for a year, okay? Um, complaints, we do get them at the Ethics Commission. They are never filed by your friends, I can tell you that. I'm not gonna go too deeply into complaints, but I want you to know just the basics. Anybody can file an ethics complaint, okay, with the, with the Ethics Commission. You've got to use a form provided by us, it's got to be signed under oath, so it's not anonymous, we need your original signature. You've got to name the individual that you allege to have violated the code. We call that person the respondent. We need you to identify the respondent's public office, detail the specific, the specific acts which allegedly violated the code. A complaint is not public unless and until it's accepted by our executive director, and the complainant is not a party to the action. One other thing not on this slide, an ethics complaint is civil in nature, it's not criminal, okay? We use terms like prosecute the complaint and violate the statutes, but it's a civil matter. Not to say that a respondent might not be in some hot water with the Attorney General down the street on the same matter, but our complaints are civil in nature. Also, no one's gonna stop you from filing a complaint, but before you do, we ask you to pick up the phone, give us a call, and speak with one of the investigators. You can, you can try out your, your facts of alleging the violation on them, get a little feedback, at least make sure you have the right form, okay? So we ask you to do that. Initial determination is the first stage of a complaint. That's where the Ethics Commission is gonna determine whether the complaint properly alleges facts that if true, are sufficient to constitute a violation. That's a pretty low bar. They meet in closed executive session, and the Ethics Commission's gonna look at the complaint, and only the complaint, and decide to either dismiss it or to authorize a full investigation. So that's initial determination. And keep in mind, at any time following initial determination, the Ethics Commission and the respondent, they can come to some sort of an agreement or a settlement on the complaint. They do need to run it by the Ethics Commission at a meeting to, to bless it and approve it, alrighty? Um, advisory opinions, we're blowing right through this, and we're almost done. Um, this is pretty much the other big chunk of my job with the Ethics Commission. Myself and my colleague and friend, Tedora Papa, Teddy and I probably draft 95% of the advisory opinions for the Ethics Commission. So I want you to know how you can get one, uh, when you might need one. An advisory opinion is a legal interpretation of the Code of Ethics. It's issued by the Ethics Commission, and it provides specific guidance about a particular and impending circumstance, and it's based on the representations of the petitioner. What this basically means is, we, the Ethics Commission does not issue advisory opinions on hypotheticals. Has to be a real matter that's pending, okay? And based on the representations of the petitioner, the petitioner is the person who's seeking the advisory opinion. That means I'm gonna write up your draft advisory opinion using everything you tell me as, as truth. It's not gonna be investigated. Hey, uh, I wouldn't go to one of the investigators, check this out, I'm told for this advisory opinion that these are the facts. Nope, we're gonna draft the opinion based on the facts as you represent them, and you're gonna be in good shape unless and until it comes to pass that those facts weren't, uh, weren't accurate. But I haven't had that happen in my tenure yet. Anybody subject to the code can seek an advisory opinion about a particular provision of the code which may affect him or her. It's gotta be bind, it's gonna be binding on the person who seeks it, okay? So you're not gonna say, uh, my uncle's on the town council, and his sister-in-law is gonna appear before him. Does he have to recuse? Happy to answer that question if your uncle asks it, all right? And the time to seek an advisory opinion is before you take official action. Better an advisory opinion today than a complaint against you tomorrow, right? Uh, also, the Ethics Commission does not issue advisory opinions on past conduct, only prospective conduct, so please keep that in mind. How you get one of these advisory opinions? You've ordered, uh, you've ordinarily got to either mail or hand-deliver your, a, a letter containing your original signature and some other info. But before I go into what needs to be involved in it, let me tell you that during the pandemic, we not only allow, but encourage advisory opinion requests to be sent to us via email, okay? Uh, but here's what we do need, whether you email it or mail it, your name, your phone number, your email address. Briefly, the name, jurisdiction, and powers of your agency, commission, or office, your official position, a little description of your duties, the nature of the potential conflict, a summary of the relevant facts, we'll tease out any additional facts we need when we call you. And do let us know if you have any time constraints. The Ethics Commission meets ordinarily twice each month, always on a Tuesday, always at nine in the morning. In the summer, they usually meet once a month, okay? Um, since April, we've been doing our commission meetings using a Zoom format. Let me tell you how well that has worked out for so many. Ask anybody on Block Island, okay? And I'm, yeah, anybody on Block Island who can just tune in instead of take the ferry over. Might be the same for our friends in Hopkinton as well. Um, we do try and address the requests for advisory opinion in the order in which they're received, but if somebody's got a time crunch, we'll do what we can to help you out. But these draft opinions are due a week before the commission meeting, so we really have to be aware of what our time constraints are. After you submit your request, you're gonna get a letter or an email saying, we got it. You're gonna get a draft recommendation prepared by a staff attorney. You are strongly encouraged to attend the Ethics Commission meeting at which your advisory opinion request will be considered. Couple of reasons. The Ethics Commission might have a question for you, and if the attorney who drafted the opinion can't answer it, and you're not there, they may need to continue it to another date. Um, so also, you may have questions for the Ethics Commission. So it's good to take part and see how it all works. Regardless of how many commissioners are sitting, you need an affirmative vote of five to approve your draft advisory opinion. You're gonna get a written copy, it's gonna be available on our website, and both the advisory opinion and the request seeking it are public records, and people can get those according to an April request. Real quick on advisory opinions, we list them on our website dating back two decades. They're, they're grouped by year. You could go on our website, type something into the search bar that, that has your question in it, and up pop six or seven advisory opinions. You read one from 2017, and you say, son of a gun, that's my question, let me see how they handled it. Oh, okay, uh, he was allowed to do it, it's, it's my situation. I don't need an advisory opinion, I'll do what they said here. Please don't, these things turn on very specific facts, all right? Uh, do read it, get an idea of which way the wind will be blowing when your advisory opinion is considered. You might even see us cite it in your draft. But the only person who can rely on an advisory opinion is the person for whom it was drafted. Financial disclosure, okay, this is it. Who's gonna file these yearly financial statements? Um, you see the list on the, on the screen, all municipal elected officials, certain municipal appointed officials, it usually has to do with how much uh, decision-making authority you have over large amounts of money. But tell you what, if you need to file an advisor, uh, an advisory opinion, if you need to file a financial disclosure statement, I'm willing to bet that you're already aware of it because our office reaches out with letters and emails to let you know. Um, if you have a question, you say, gee, I don't file one of these things, I never have, but I think I might have to. Let me call the Ethics Commission and find out. Unless, you know, you can also ask the town clerk, if the clerk doesn't know, he or she will call us, or you can call us. So, uh, the purpose of financial disclosure, I assure you, it is not intended to harass, annoy, or embarrass. Financial disclosure helps ensure that people acting in the public interest don't use their public positions to further their private financial interests, okay? These things help identify any conflicts between an official's financial interests and his or her public office. They increase the overall transparency in government appointments and decision-making, and they help further the public's confidence in government, and what's wrong with that? No one's gonna ask you what you paid for your house, how much money you have in the bank. That's not the type of questions you're gonna see on the financial disclosure statement. We're looking for relationships, okay? When are these due? Uh, April 30th, so you may have missed it. If you did, don't worry, it's not like we're waiting for midnight on April 30th to come after you right away. If you didn't file yet, please do so now. Or you can expect a phone call from us saying, gee, did you forget? Did you know you had to file? Did you forget to file? What can we do to help you get this thing filed in a timely manner? Okay, so ordinarily speaking, these things are due the last Friday in April or within 30 days of your appointment to a public position, or the filing of a notice of organization with the Board of Elections or declaring as a candidate whichever one comes first. All officials who are required to file financial disclosure forms must continue to do so until they've been out of office for one full calendar year, okay? We encourage you to file these online at the Ethics Commission website. There's the address on the screen, www dot ethics dot ri dot gov. This is super helpful because it retains your information year to year, and you need only update it each year. And I've heard people on the phone with, with my colleagues in my office who will sit and help you fill it out online if you need some help. And if you're an old-fashioned, I'd rather put it on a piece of paper and send it in. You can do that, you just have to call us and we'll send you a form, okay? Um, this is where we are at the Rhode Island Ethics Commission, 40 Fountain Street, on the eighth floor in Providence. Our phone number is 222-3790. Now, uh, I wanted to mention that somewhere between, if you have a decision to make, somewhere between doing nothing and getting a formal advisory opinion, you can just pick up the phone anytime, call the Ethics Commission, talk to an investigator or an attorney, and chat it out. Now, no one's gonna tell you you need to get an advisory opinion, or you don't need to get an advisory opinion, but we'll work it, work, work through with you. Sometimes informal guidance is all you need to get you through. Um, because anything that we talk about, right, during a duty call, we call it. If you called it to say, Lynn, I just wanna ask you a couple of questions. What I say is not binding on the Ethics Commission, okay? But I can engage in general conversation with, with general advice that may or may not be enough for you. Our business hours are 8:30 a.m. until 4:30 p.m. But tell you what, during the pandemic, I'm sure you're not inclined to just drop in, uh, if you're from Hopkinton, but we do ask people to call first, um, to make sure that someone's there to receive you. Of the 12 of us that work at the Ethics Commission, there are always three to four in the office during the pandemic, and the rest of us telework from home on many days, which is what I'm doing tonight. But, um, we do check our voicemail often and our email always, and you can reach us that way. So you have been delightfully attentive, I'm very grateful for your kind attention, and I think we're gonna finish in under the wire here. I'm gonna stop sharing my screen so that I can join you again. And, um, if you have any questions, I'm happy to try and address them now. Um, some people prefer to ask their questions in private, you can call the office, that's fine too. Some people at this point are just so tired of hearing me chatter on and nothing's settled in yet that you can't even formulate a question, and that's fine too. Uh, if anyone has a question, you can feel free to raise your hand or unmute, and, uh, I will try and to get you, I don't know if I'm the only one hosting at this point. Let me take a look, I don't see any hands raised, um, I don't see a chat box. Steve, are you unmuted?
I am, can you hear me, Lynn?
I can, so I don't know, do you, do you note anyone who's looking to ask a question at this time?
I, hold on one second, I see one hand, Sharon, um, I've noticed your hand's been up for a while, um, is that intentional?
I don't know if we need to unmute, I'm gonna, I'm, hmm, I think.
No, no, it was just leftover from before.
Okay. Okay, so of the attendees.
There are no hands raised, nope.
Okay, so I think I'm gonna get you, don't you have a meeting at seven tonight?
I do.
So I think we're gonna get you there right on time. I wanna thank you for having me tonight, uh, it's been a pleasure and a privilege. Uh, we're here if you need us, and even if you don't, okay?
Lynn, thank you very much for your time.
My pleasure, have a wonderful evening. Take care.